We'll call the Newport City Council meeting to order Monday, June 19th, 2017, 6:30 PM. Meeting in the beautiful Goodrich Memorial Library. Probably the room is bigger, I have to speak up louder. Thank you, I'm using a smaller room. Is there anything I can turn that down a little? Oh, do you have a mic? Well, I can probably... We'll start that again. We'll call the Newport City Council meeting to order on Monday, June 19th, 6:30 PM. The Assembly Room at the Goodrich Memorial Library, 202 Main Street, Newport. All members of the City Council are present. Others include James Johnson, our Clerk Treasurer, and Laura Dogan, our City Manager. The next item will be the coronation of our Centennial Grand Marshal honoring 100 on the 100. And I'm gonna turn it over to our City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Minogue. Thank you, Tony Parmalo. Thank you, Ernie Parmalo, for coming here and bringing your dad. So first and foremost, what I want to say is, thank you all for coming out here tonight. I know this is an unusual location. It's an unusual event. And we're gonna have some joy tonight. One of the first things that I want to point out is this beautiful room and this beautiful building. Were it not for Jim Johnson and his beautiful wife Nicole and Linda Bousier, this room would be looking very different. And Carol. Carol Nicholson, the librarian, everybody's godsend right here. So Carol allowed this meeting to take place. And Jim and Nicole and Linda went gamebusters cleaning this room. After this dirty, excuse me. But making this room as beautiful it is, the tablecloth. I want to point out that beautiful photograph that Tony gave to the city back on April 14th. And I'd also like to point out that flag.
That's when I was a young kid.
That flag, I'd like to draw your attention to for just a few minutes, please. The interesting thing about that flag is that nobody knows the origination of that flag. That has been in a closet for about 20 years. And this is, as far as we know, its first unveiling in a very long time. We don't know the history of it, so please take a look at it, all you history buffs. And if you have any background information about it, please let us know. It's very exciting. So having said that, tonight, we are gonna kick off our centennial celebration. Our centennial celebration was made possible by Tony Parmalo. The city is grateful to you and thanks you for that. Although a group has been actively working on it for about a year, and we've got another year of planning ahead of us, we'd like to announce that the centennial is gonna be a terrific event. And please mark your calendars, June 29th through July 4th, 2018. Tonight, we're gonna honor you as our Grand Marshal of the Centennial. And to that end, we have a little surprise. Please bear with me. Tony, you are the official Grand Marshal of this new city of Newport's Centennial Celebration. We wanted to give you a little taste, and we wanted to give the community a little taste of the excitement that your centennial planning committee has, and the quality of events that we have planned to honor our fine city. We couldn't do it without you, as you know, and we're absolutely thrilled. Some of the events that we have planned are about 250 reenactors, both French and British, including boats, are gonna be setting up an encampment at Proudly Beach for the weekend. A huge parade, complete with marching bands on Saturday. Chicken pot pie and other delicious supper menus throughout the celebration. Community arts and museum displays, fireworks, and every day, there's gonna be lots of events scattered about the city. We are truly excited. Thank you for supporting this and coming here tonight to help us kick off this wonderful centennial celebration. And, happy birthday! You've seen Newport grow from the very beginning. Tonight, we are celebrating 100 birthdays for both you and the city. How many people can say that? It's amazing.
One.
We've got a couple of memories for you that we're gonna ask Jim. That's gonna take you down memory lane over the past 100 years.
And happy birthday, Tony. I'm just gonna go down through a few things that happened to the city in your lifetime. So on March 5th, 1918, the village of Newport and West Derby combined to become the city of Newport. At that time, the city had paved streets, cement streets on Main Street. Large hotels, many businesses, and barren... West Derby was kind of barren. The city organized, West Derby School became the East School. Glen Derby School became the South School. Newport High and Greater School became the West.
Sorry, I missed that.
Newport High School was built in 1925, and it cost $98,000 to build it in 1925. In 1936, International Club was the last dance floor in New England capable of holding 2,000 dancers. You probably danced on that floor once or twice. Performers such as Louis Armstrong, Les Brown, Rosemary Clooney, Cat Cowley, Glenn Miller, and the Dorsey Brothers entertained there while it looped between Montreal and Boston. Newport had four hotels in Turner Centres. Memphis Maydaw House, built in 1839, had 188 rooms. It burned in 1906. The Hearst Hotel was across the street. The Raymond House was located on a piece of land where the President Cozrie Bridge and the Long Bridge merged. The Bellevue Hotel was built in 1873 and retained the Newport House in 1891, which was demolished in 1973. It was located in the site of the People's Bank now. From 1850 to 1948, there were a number of steamers on the lake. And maybe you rode on one of these. There was the Stargight Stripes, the Yoko, the John A. Best known as the Mountain Maid, 1850, 1870. The Lady of the Lake was the most famous. It was 167 feet long and sailed between 1867 and 1915. Her hull was made in Scotland, she was boiled and made in Montreal. The Anthemist was 100 feet long. She was built in 1907 and carried 300 passengers. A daily trip between Maydaw and Quebec. The Anthemist was sold in 1948 and taken back to Canada. In 1920, the agreement started a bus line. It became, became, became Vermont Transit in 1939 and served from Burlington West and White River Junction to the South. The Burns Theater opened on April, September 16th, 1915, and the admission to go to a movie then was 25 cents. It's about $8.25 now. The New Viscal Airport opened in 1945. The oldest continuous business in the city of Newport is Ferret's Greenhouse. And it began operation in 1869 and is still in operation today. First hospital in O'Leary County was the O'Leary County Memorial. And that was in 1923. Just a little tidbit. In 1929, King George VI and Queen Elizabeth visited Newport on the way to Montreal. They stopped at lunch, they were in the hotel. Newport High School closed in 1967, same year Newport, North Country Union High School opened, so it's been 50 years. So now Newport can claim many important individuals as their own, including Vermont Governor Joshua Grail, George Proudly, Lieutenant Governor David Camp, U.S. Senator Winston Proudly, Vermont Secretary of State Harry Black, Aaron Grail, Interstate Commerce Commission member Charles Proudly, Supreme Court Justice Rudolph Daley, Astronaut David Bradlin, and New Hampshire Governor Blaine Dwayne. Charles Adams, who was the founder and owner of the Boston Bruins and the descendant of Martin Adams, was the first settler. And now, we have Antonio Palos. Happy birthday.
So with that, let's get the party started. Happy birthday, Tony. Happy birthday, Newport City. Let's eat some cake. I have some cake in the next room, and we'd like to invite everybody to join us in there. Carrot cake and chocolate stout, I'm not kidding. So please, a few moments of levity during our meeting. Please come in and join us. Hug, nod, rub elbows, enjoy yourself.
I can tell you how important the seven is because my brother was born in 1909. I was born in 1917. My son, that one there, was born in '47. My eldest son was born in '57. And Terry was born in '87. Then I have a grand, great-grandson who was born in 2017. So 100 years between him and I. When I look at all those towns, and I'm sure that, I'll tell you something you've probably never heard. Way down there, one of the big department stores, a big furniture store, and downstairs was a nine-hole golf course underneath. For many years to come on that. And changes, of course, in the, you know, in the '47, that's when all the change towards South Cabotin. J. Diddy Berry was here before that. Mark Appiah Ward and the W.T. Grants and the people who were down there. Of course, Eric Fishman and Woolworth was there. And J. Diddy Berry's was here a long time ago. Because I trimmed windows. And I tell you frankly, I said, "This is the best sixes of my life." I was walking by one time with this fellow brother, Al Miller. I wrapped the window, and he says, "Come on in." So I walked in, he says, "You wanna help me?" And I said, "Yes." So I started decorating the windows with him. And, and, and he said, "Where'd you learn to do this thing?" I said, "No, I never did. I was 13 years old." And so he says, "You wanna work with me?" And I said, "Yes." I worked that night. I worked every night that week. And he says, "You know, you turn a nicer window." And I, he says, "If I can get you a little smaller job," he says, "to trim all the windows." So I started working, when I was 13 years old. I worked every night of my life trimming windows until I was 17 years old. I made $10 a week. That was awful. I met all the other kids. And I had a great, great type. And, you know, so many people. I never got a nickel from anybody, but I worked for it. Like, for example, I remember I used to go to, to have a store for some... I'd say, "Can I work here?" He says, "Yeah." "You can..." I'd eat 100 baked potatoes, I could have two flights of stairs. I'd bring 150 pounds each time, and I'd get $1. But I'd wait until 9 o'clock, because 9 o'clock, they had, all the pastry was 60% off. So I'd come back and buy $1, I'd be, got $2 on it. Another thing I get for, for Sunday's Father's Day, you know, one of the cards says, you know, "Have it, have a lot of money and not have bad." "But your, your children and grandchildren will always appreciate it." Absolutely. He's ready. But anyway, as I, as I enter to you, you know, I've lived in Burlington since 1942. And, and, but I still call Burlington my own because I remember Mr. Lawson, Mr. Lee Blay, and the Proudlys, and all that stuff I do so well. And what cute, cute story that I've set to many, many, many people. And, and we had no money at all. And my father was very ill, and we had, couldn't take care of him, he was really, really sick. So I put him in a car, I brought him to the hospital. I didn't ask anybody. I walked in, I says, "Your dad's been in the hospital." So, so, so they said, "Uh..." I was about 18, 19 years old. The nurses were about 18, 19 years old, so we got along pretty good. So they, they brought him into a ward. It was maybe five or six people at the ward. I says, "I don't want him in a ward." They said, "Well, you want him?" I said, "In a private room." And they said, "You know how much a private room costs?" I said, "How about $12 a day?" They goes, "Don't forget, $12 a day." But I'll be specific. The managers of Fishman and all this, they said $25 a day. So they brought him into private room. I guess they told the board of directors at MSL. So they brought a pair, and they said, "Tony, Tony will pay us." And he was, I brought him in in October, he died in February, so I probably owed him some $800, you know. So I did pay them back, which gave him $100,000 later on. I didn't, and they won a championship on it too. Newport is really in my heart, that's all time. So I'm so glad it happened. And I'm so, at the same time, I'm kind of sorry that they didn't see the handrail of the wall, what I call BB5, whatever. Because I called Bill, I said, "Look, I'm all done." And I told him, "It's a vice station, my office, everything else." And we were waiting for that. He says, "I've gone away, and I'll come back with $5 million." "You're all done." "I don't believe it. You haven't kept your word with it?" And I pulled it. I think, at that time, I was highly present because that was supposed to be, the shopping centers would be all tore down and, 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 and I have to pass this center. And, and, well, it would never happen. I would end up, like one man who sent a paper, and he says, "This one under me, Tony Palos, he says, had told us about what's gonna happen. And on his way out, he says, "One thing I want is a 400-room hotel in Newport-Vermont, in Iwo Jima." "I'm sorry to those people. I'm sorry for the, what happened here. But, you know, it happened. You can't, you can't say we can't do it. Of course we can do it, we will do it." So anyway, I'm sure glad that you invited me, and I'll be here next year.
I have a feeling that this audience would very much like to sing you "Happy Birthday." Can I go with you guys? I'm, I'm not gonna sing. All right. Ricky, you play music.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Tony. Happy birthday to you.
I love you before we hear that cheer.
Cake?
Yeah.
Get the cake.
Okay, we're gonna reconvene, a City Council meeting. And we're gonna move to the item number three real quick, which is to approve the minutes of June 5th, 2017. Now entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the minutes that are applied to the City Council.
Motion's been made, is there a second? Made and seconded discussion on the minutes? Then hearing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. The ayes have it, motion carries. The next item is comments by members of the public. And I'm gonna turn it over to Ernie Parmalo, who's gonna give us an update on the waterfront plans behind Vista.
So maybe if I, I hate to cover Dad's photographs, but it might be the easiest to have the public and the council say simultaneously. So as they say, a picture is a thousand words. And as you know, when I came before the city and I said, you know, "We're gonna save the supermarket, we're gonna, so, we're gonna renovate it, and we're gonna work out a bunch of stuff, and we're gonna fix up the shopping center." Well, we did that. In the meantime, we've been working diligently on the waterfront as a kind of a connector to downtown. Downtown is part of us, and we're part of downtown. And I thought, the more we could glue that together, the better. This center, for years, had kind of turned us back on the waterfront. So when we started to redo this whole thing, how could we create an environment that was really good to the citizenry of the community? Open it up, make the shopping center look better, do a win-win. So we've been working with the community, Tom's been great. We've been working with Laura, Paul came to the last meeting. We've got, we've met with A&R this morning. We've met with Mary Pat and Robert Autries. And we've worked in, the magic of what has happened here, and I won't get into great detail, I'll just show you. The connection to your existing bike path, it's a walking path through our property. We'll continue to work with the neighbors to extend it, and we're working on grants and a whole bunch of other elements. What has happened here, which is kind of a wonderful combination, is that not only do we open the waterfront up and add docks on both sides, hopefully nature will be able to use this. People will come in and shop, could park there, walk up to downtown, use arcades of the whole thing. So anyway, we've done a lot of analysis. And as you go a little further, and you go a little deeper into this, we've actually done a couple of things. We created benches and docks and openings and picnic areas and kayak access. But the other key thing that we found, and we shared this week, is that we've met Act 64. Our engineers have been working in tandem with a number of local groups and the community and the state to determine how to deal with an inch runoff off the parking lot absorbent and not hit the lake. So the bike path has all of a sudden created aesthetics. It's created some, hopefully, as we talked to Karen, some economic stimulus, access to the lake, and created some elements. But it's also done, it's restorative, it's environmental, it's dealing with the runoff and the stormwater. So it's a win-win-win-win. And we're working in collaboration, and I wanted to share with the council where we are with this. There will be no out-of-pocket cash, the city will pay for everything, but Tom and the team with Laura have, have been working to do installation. And then we'll give you a permanent easement and access over it in parking. And I can't imagine anything that has more connectivity between this complex and the community. And the lake is our, both of them, it's our city's jewel. And we're gonna be able to open it up a lot more. So anyway, that's in a nutshell, I may answer any questions. I'm gonna leave these prints again, I think we left these some. And hopefully, I'm hoping that if everything goes according to the plan, we're submitting to Act 250 tomorrow. But because we've met with everybody, and they've all given us a thumbs up, there should be no hearing, and we'll have an administrative permit in 30 days. And we're gonna start construction, and you're gonna see this by the fall. So I agree, it's been an honor to work with this community. You just heard a story about somebody that was here 100 years ago. I'm a newbie by comparison. But we've been having some real open, transparent interaction with how we help downtown. If downtown is better, we're better. If we're better downtown is better. So I thank you for what you did tonight and the collaboration that we've created over the last year, particularly as it relates to this. So anyway, hopefully, the next time we get together, we'll be celebrating the opening of the Lockney Path. Thank you. See anybody raise your hand, so.
Yeah, there it is.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a perfect example of a public-private partnership that's really gonna help. I was concerned about the Act 64 with the shopping plaza. This really, I've not really been involved studying the Act 64 requirements. I've been in Montreal a lot. And this really will help show, but actually leading the, leading the way with the state.
Yeah, no, this is actually gonna be a model.
A model, right.
And towards the, we didn't expect to be able to address the stormwater elements positively and effectively, and inexpensively. By doing the aesthetic and the restoration in the waterfront, we've added swales and elements and the like, and it takes care of that first inch. And it doesn't reach the lake. It's great for the lake, it's great for the city. And hopefully, we'll have a tremendous amount of use by, you know, Newport citizens. So, and our just around the area. So we're delighted, we hope it'll help Nathan, the outdoor gear group, and help create a stimulus that, you've all been working, you've done a fabulous job with your walking paths, bike paths, waterfront. This is simply an extension of it. Hopefully, it will amplify what you've already done. So, and having the relationship that we've had, working with Tom and Laura and Paul and the like, this is a win-win. And it won't cost the city a dime out of pocket, just what they've allocated in their existing equipment and their existing person power. And we'll cover all of the cash dollars. So, and everybody wins. So it's a, like you were saying, Paul, it's a, is a perfect public-private partnership. So, and it has been for quite some time. Because I think as we indicated, that we were kind of questioning which way we were all going, and we all decided to go forward.
Once again, I wanna thank Tony for coming and for your support.
And Ernie, you just said that it costs the city anything. I got you on a check with the city outside.
We're leaving now. No, we're leaving now. Four, five years ago, we, we had a big, I was a pastor. Yeah, obviously. So everybody spoke and Ernie, he says, I'm probably the only son that retired before his father.
Probably true.
So anyway, I got up and I says, you know, Ernie, you mentioned that, I said, you know, you're gonna hijack, you were sailing here in Europe. What the hell are you going over to work? We're leaving. This is what the government, I think you're a hell of a job here. And I think you've got as good a better than what I could've done. Okay, we're good.
Could you grant that for one second?
Thanks, guys.
And we'll see you in Detroit next summer.
Yeah? Yeah, we'll get 100-year-old Tom, give me 100 in the city.
Hang around if I can see you again, I'll be it.
Bye, thank you. Okay.
Slow elevator. Oh, that's 44 to go.
Okay.
It's coming.
We'll be there.
Okay, adios.
Do you need any help downstairs?
No, we're good, thank you. Thank you very much.
Any other comments by members of the public?
Through screen.
Yes.
Lauren Brim in Port City. This is just something I've noticed in the last week and especially today. I'm just wondering if there's any way for our public works to look at the traffic lights. I'm wondering why the traffic light, which I think may be a state light at the bottom of the access road and that road there is flashing again in the summer. It's causing a lot of trouble for people coming off the access road at the Somerset Bank. And today I was coming through about quarter of, quarter after, excuse me, quarter till 5:00, down through by Cumberland Farms and from the Derby area. And that light is so short that one or two cars is coming through it and there were 10 cars behind me. And I'm just wondering if there's any way that we can get our public works to look at those two sites.
Where's the short light?
The Cumberland Farms is very short.
Tom still there? Now the light by the Somerset Bank, you have put in a repair call for that, correct?
Yes, but there is only one company that, other than the State of Vermont, so I'm kind of waiting to hear back from them. The one company that is left that does that type of work is so busy right now. I called him and two weeks later he finally called me back and said he couldn't come. So I'm gonna try to rely on the State of Vermont. And if you're talking the other side by fire station? Is that the other light you're talking about?
The other light at Cumberland Farms.
Oh, at Cumberland Farms?
Yeah, it's really short. Today, one car was turning left to go down by subway and they were waiting for cars to come up through and the light turned red, turned green and then all the cars are coming and they turned, I mean literally it was, nobody could get through. So it was very bad.
The fire station one's the same.
Yeah, actually.
It's very short coming down the access road. Western Avenue is very long.
Yes.
Yeah, I asked about the fire station because we don't own that one. That's the state's and they've been working on it, but.
My name is Hugh McEel, I live in Newport, resident of Newport. I just have a couple things to say, I've got one comment on this picture I'm looking at in the background with all the cars on Main Street, beautiful. I commend Tony for trying to bring back what was here a few years ago. Born and raised in Newport. I remember Newport being sidewalks full on a Friday night. You couldn't walk on the sidewalk, it was so busy. And that reminds me of this picture. But we don't have that anymore. But what we have is an assessment of this city's taxes that allows us who have lived here all our lives to want to move out because we can no longer live here. That's how bad it is. That's, it was the worst assessment, mine went up $80,000. My brother's went up $100,000. It's ridiculous for what we're getting out of Newport city. There's nothing here. There's a building on Main Street that's assessed lower than my house is, which is ridiculous. This is Main Street. This is the comment I want to make. The assessment that I got, I did go to complain. I don't know what's gonna become of it, but it's getting to the point, I can't live here anymore. And the residents that have been here all their lives can't live here anymore. Maybe people moving in that have money and can afford to live in this city, maybe that's what we're gonna get. But not the locals. I can't, I can't afford to live here. That's it. The other comments I want to make or the questions I have are two. Number one, I am, I have never gotten an answer. Or do I know, I've asked several people, what happened to the ice-out money that went in late November May God when this statue fell in the ice? I had a vested interest in that. I put some money toward the date and time that it went out. I had heard nothing as to where that money went or who got the prize. Number one. Number two, is it a big secret? Is this, in the interest of transparency, we lost a secretary to the city manager. What happened? No one tells me why she was let go. Is that a big secret? I have no clue why she was let go. And in the interest of transparency as a taxpayer, I think I should know that. And I should know where the money went for the ice-out. Those are the two questions I had and I have not gotten an answer. There's never been anything published on any of that. So that's my questions and my comments. Thank you.
As far as the money for the ice-out went to the rec. department, correct?
That was awarded and I'll find out from Jessica Warren.
And that person, you don't know?
Sure.
Okay. And as far as the other issue that has a personnel matter that is not discussed in the public?
Okay, keep it a big secret.
No, personnel matters are never.
I thought this council was transparent, obviously it is.
Well, I won't get into an argument, but personnel matters are not public information. It is confidential information. And that is all I can say on that matter. Any other comments by members of the public?
Yes, I'm Neil of the Cell, I've been a resident for 25 years. And I just wanted to say how nice it is to hear some good news. We're inundated right now with really negative, really difficult news. If you see Tony Pomelo, who's celebrating his 100th anniversary, who's been so generous with this community. And I happen to benefit from Tony Pomelo many years ago. He started a scholarship fund at St. Michael's College that I was a recipient, you know, 30 years ago. He's done so much good work in so many places. And thank you to Laura, to Paul, to the entire city council and to the Pomerlos for caring enough about a community to reinvest in. We are the greatest resource we've got. We have the finest natural resources in this area. But our people are always our finest resource. So we need to remember that, you know, we are members of a community. Civilization comes from the Latin root for the term member of my household. And we've forgotten that we're members of one another's households and we need to find shelter in each other. So thanks for helping me to remember that we're here to find shelter in one another. In the good and the bad, in the moments of challenge and assessments and all of these other things that are really important to speak to. But it's important also to remember generosity and some of the good news. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from anyone in the audience? Yes?
Just don't want to let Mr. McNeil stand out there all by himself with regard to the reassessment. I want to let you know that there are any number of people in this community who are really upset with the reassessment and also with the increase in the budget for next year.
Anything else, then we'll move on. The next item is municipal offices, municipal offices copy machine replacement recommendation in the book. Laura?
So the municipal office copy machine was purchased outright in 2009 for $300. It's dying and will soon be dead. We are paying an exorbitant service fee because of the number of repairs that needs required under leases. At this point, I'm recommending that we replace it. We need to do something with this machine. And what I've done is provided a worksheet for you where you can see the results of our solicitation. We're recommending the Canon Solutions of Mid America Canon Image Runner Advance 6565i. That's the least expensive on a lease. And you'll see that there is a monthly, we're recommending a 16-month lease, which is $141.25 and the $33.75 monthly service contract. That's about $70, $80 more than we're currently paying. But we're getting a brand-new machine with better features. It's faster, it's market-to-date, it'll be more efficient. And I'm recommending that we lease that machine. And I'm asking for a council vote if you have any questions.
Questions from council members?
Are there any local providers who might be able to provide this service?
The closest one we've done was W.B. Mason. And if you take a look at that, you're gonna see that they didn't include a lot of details that came. So the Canon is the same one that Junior High uses, a lot of the studios around here. And for that reason, that was why.
So there's nobody in Newport or St. Osborne?
W.B. Mason is the closest shop.
Lyndonville.
There isn't?
Lyndonville Print Shop is now part of W.B. Mason, so that is a close up.
Any other?
We spent about four months worth of meetings talking about this in church. Came to a similar conclusion, so.
And I can tell you the Canon, the Canon copiers are a good brand of copier. I'm familiar with them on that aspect, but yeah, unfortunately, Lyndonville office purchased by W.B. Mason out of Massachusetts. So.
It's a very different company than what I was gonna go off.
Right. So I would recommend we go with the city manager's recommendation and leasing of the Canon copier. I'll make that motion.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Made and seconded, discussion on that motion?
I'm just wondering, is there any chance that the city purchased outright the old machine of, any kind of not buyback, but anything that, I mean, is there anything salvageable in this old machine? Is there a possibility, is it possible to donate it to somebody? Is it, I mean, are we just gonna send it off to the graveyard in the sky?
The recommendation is to recycle it, discard it. One of the companies that we're not recommending would give us $13.50 for it. So it's really dead.
Yeah. Anything else?
Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you.
The next item is the loader purchase recommendation. And we received a memo from Tom Bernier about the new 2017 loader. And he had all the bids and prices.
Tom part of the show.
And questions from council members on this?
Same question, is there anybody more local than these guys that are more established, well, St. Paul, Chester and Milton?
Nothing sells that big equipment. They have higher equipment, but they don't sell larger equipment like that, construction equipment.
Thanks.
This is replacing which machine?
The 2004 John Deere loader.
And that has, that was purchased when?
In 2004.
So it was purchased new back then?
Yeah.
How many miles, how many hours, any idea?
I don't remember.
So it's gotta be well beyond its scope anyways, as far as the.
Well, the idea behind it was the mid gas. Most of them were offering us a really good trade because it's still worth something. We've had issues with that loader right from the get-go with the paint job. We fought with them for two years before they finally painted it and the paint job they put on it was no better than the first one they gave us. So it's getting ripe in places. So it was a good time to get rid of it before we have a major malfunction of a motor, which would probably then it'd be, we'd get no value out of it.
And last question, we do have funds in your budget for this?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Other questions from council members? Then I will entertain a motion and recommend the approval of purchase of the K-621G from Borogard Equipment for $106,500. Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion. The motions are made, is there a second? Made and seconded, any discussion on that motion? Then hearing now, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Mayor, where's Borogard Equipment out of?
Borogard Equipment is out of Waretown.
Paul Chester.
Yeah, Paul Chester. Okay. Moving on, Mr. Johnson. Oh, we didn't vote yet, oh, okay, it was a question before we voted, sorry. Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Mr. Barbara, do you feel a loop when he asks? Okay. Okay, the next item will be new business, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Wilson. Mr. Warren, I don't have anything, Mr. Shinet?
Very briefly, I'd like to offer congratulations to Bob Wilson and St. Marx and Christine on, they were both ordained priests in the Episcopal Church. Last weekend it was a wonderful ceremony and it's two homegrown priests is a great accomplishment for a community and for individuals, so to recognize them.
Anything else on the business?
Oh, nothing.
Nothing, okay. We'll move to org business, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Wilson. Mr. Warren, anything? No?
I have nothing that I need to.
Anything, Mr. Shinet?
I'm sorry.
Laura?
I just announced the next centennial planning committee is July 13th, 5 to 7.
Okay. And the next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be Monday, July 3rd, 2017, not 2013. 2017, Monday, July 3rd, 2017. 6:30 PM at the city council. Okay, now we need a motion to adjourn at 7:45. Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded, discussion, then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.